So we go ahead and call this public hearing to order. The reason for the public hearing is changing the city or town ordinance from two acres to five acres on ag and RA. I spoke with Tracy with the EPD, the way he had kind of here on another issue, and he thought that was a good idea for agriculture to do that. So I talked to him about that, too. So, you know, I mean, he's not recommending, but he says it's a good idea. And they don't get into him with that, so. So I guess we leave it up to comments from the audience?
Yep, you just need to open the public hearing and then anyone who would like to speak can speak on it.
Oh, okay.
And I'll go ahead and give you, just so you have it in front of you, a copy of the proposed ordinance. It's just changing from two to five right there.
Okay. Let's say this is verse one of the county law.
The sound didn't affect the ones that are on your pond for the two acres?
Yes.
You need to make sure that makes sense.
All right. So anyway, I'm going to read you the, and it just changes in this section right here. Is that all we changed?
It's just section four, three, one of the Town and Talking Rocks ordinances. It was previously changed from agricultural to that residential agricultural, I believe, at the end of 2018. The only additional change in here is changing the minimum lot size from two acres to five acres.
Okay. So I call this meeting to order, this public hearing, and like I say, I'll read the ordinance with section four, dash, three, dash, one of the code of Town of Talking Rock. RA, residential agricultural. The purpose of this district is to accommodate poorly. Low-density, single-family residential development with a minimum lot size of five acres. Such areas being protected from the depreciation effects of small lot development by permitting a company. Appropriated agricultural uses. There shall be an undisturbed buffer of ten feet in which no animal may be kept from the property line of each parcel of the property in the district. All other provisions of this code, ordinance in conflict with this amendment are hereby repealed. All right, so I'll open it up for public comment.
I have a question on that.
Okay.
When you said, David Bryant, Wildcat Timber, by the way, it, you're saying no animals kept in that. Is that no household pets?
No, no, the.
I'm just reading the language as it's.
It's a buffer of pasture as far as for horses, any kind of farm animals.
The way you read it, it said no animals. That's why I wanted to make sure that that's clear.
That's no animals in the ten-foot buffer.
Okay, in the ten-foot buffer.
Yeah.
They should be kept there if they, if your dog ran through the ten feet on the edge, you'd probably, that's not.
I'm with you there.
But I mean, as far as building a chemo or anything like that in that buffer zone.
Gotcha.
You can do that.
Okay, I'm with you there. My other question on that is it's going from two acres to five acres. So for example, if someone buys, I'm going to just say it's 20 acres, and they want to put in a conservation easement, you have to keep, state law, you have to keep it an acre and a half for your home site outside of the conservation easement. So if it's an acre and a half, and then the other 30 acres, 27 or 28 and a half acres to put in conservation easement, you can't do that now with the five acres. So you could only put 25 acres into conservation easement because it's five-acre minimum size instead of an acre and a half for your conservation easement? Has that been looked into at all?
And that would depend on the conservation easement regulations because you're not actually, there are exceptions when it comes to conservation easements.
I was going to say, it has to be a minimum of 10 acres.
Right.
And your home site is an acre and a half that you can hold out, and you can put the rest in the conservation easement.
Right.
But that acre and a half has to be surveyed out to remove, to keep that exempt.
That would depend on the conservation easement requirements.
And that's what I'm saying, those are the conservation easement requirements. That's what I'm saying. So would that be a variance that you could offer if you were putting in the conservation?
Well, I mean, our minimum lot size all over, I mean, any zoning, I mean, other than lots downtown that's already divided up into lots. But any, any other new, new structures would have to meet the minimum of two acres. I mean, that's what we've had all along.
But now it's five acres, not two acres.
Well, no, but I mean, I mean, the acre and a half, you know, it would have to be a minimum of two acres because that's what, that's what we had.
That's what I'm saying. Right. My question now is moving forward, if they want to keep that out for, I need to know because I'm selling people property and, you know, what can you put in the conservation easement to save them taxes? So now is it, can they, do they have to keep five acres out? Because that's the lot size? If that's, because if you, if you survey out an acre and a half, or in this case in Talking Rock ordinance, it's two acres, survey out two acres, you put the rest in conservation easement? How does that affect that? That's my question on that.
I believe that you would have to, if you're surveying it out, separating it from the rest, dividing it out, then you would have to comply with that lot size of five acres.
So it has to be five acres? So it's not like the rest of Georgia law where it's an acre and a half and the rest and that for conservation?
I'd have to look at the conservation easement law to, I'd have to look at the conservation easement law to see if that supersedes, because there, conservation easements are a special exception. If that supersedes this zoning requirement, and it may, we would have to look into that.
Okay, well, that's.
Because it's not something, it's still owned by the same owner, so it's a matter of whether that's considered actually completely breaking out that parcel. Because it's, it's a dependent parcel on the conservation easement. I mean, they're connected to each other.
Right.
So we'd have to look at the conservation easement law on that.
If you let me know on that, that'd be, that'd be great. I just need to know what to be able to tell my customers moving forward.
I mean, once, once they look at it and see what we can do by Georgia law, then of course that's what we'll do as far as the conservation goes.
And if y'all could let me know something on that. Like I say, I just, if I'm selling property and they're asking me, what can I do with conservation, I just need to be able to tell them what you can and can't do.
Exactly.
Now, on, on most other things, now, now, like I say, I don't know, I deal, I deal with a lot of the building stuff. You cannot go less stringent with the code, but you can go more. But I don't know if this falls into that category. Also, that anybody that we have been talking to about before this that has asked about two acres will be a big grandfather den. So, so, so like, we got Chris Bennett that bought on, on the backside that had already been talking, he was waiting on the permits. And just like if the Estes or anybody that owned that property that had been talking already before the permits and stuff got out, then they would be allowed to do the same thing. You know, so, so it doesn't affect anybody that's already talking. I, I just don't feel like that would be right. But, but this going forward, any, any subdivision, you know, would have to meet the five acres.
Okay.
Okay.
If I were my 14 and a half acres, I could cut it up to two acre tracks. Is that correct?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about like, uh, uh, Ken and Joyce, because they came to us wanting two acres cut out of it for, for.
Of own the property before it's come in, is that correct?
Well, now, now, I'm talking about if you had talked to us about cutting out two acres.
Existing applications, the law, so existing applications, what the ordinance was at the time those applications were received.
Yeah.
So this would be for new applications going forward.
Yeah.
Randy, just to kind of go back just a little bit, and Todd had a question about that. When, because I was involved in getting that property split up into four equal tracks of 14 and a half acres. And conversations that we had at that time said that, at that time, Talking Rock was welcoming or open to two acre splits.
Correct.
Okay. So there was conversation on that 14 and a half acre track, track one, in the past about splitting that into two acre tracks. We didn't do that because we decided to go to bigger tracks.
Well, and, and like I say, again, I, I miss, and like I say, I give you, I think I gave you a copy of the zoning section.
I, I do have a.
Okay. So, so I misspoke on that as long, we, the ordinance was in place in 1996. And like I say, I misspoke on that because as it reads now, is that, that a subdivision has to meet that subdivision ordinance, which means that you have to have five acres and the properties association has to make sure that the roads are deeded and owned by the association and maintained by the association. Now, now, I'm not saying that we couldn't come up with something, but, but it still would have to, because what we'd have to do then, because you're not talking about agriculture anymore, you would have to have a rezoning request, and then they would have to have a public hearing and everything like that to even consider that. Because that would, that would be, you know, that would be.
That would be a subdivision.
Yeah.
If you read in what you were given, a subdivision, that the, the definition of a subdivision is any parcel of land that is divided into two or more parcels is considered a subdivision per the code that was done in 1996.
And more than two.
Well, not two.
No, it says two or more.
In ours. And the reason being is because, all right, let's say that you cut out two acres for financial reasons and you have the easement for that two acres. If you, for some reason, either sold it or the bank came back and, and took it back for non-payment, then that, that would be a new owner. And that's the reason we're saying that. And we're not saying, we understand it's in the same property owner, but, but it can be sold separate from the other.
So Talking Rock's subdivision, the definition of a subdivision in Talking Rock is different than the definition of a subdivision in the Pickens County?
Well, I mean, it's what we had on there and Jeff, and Jeff read it, and Jeff read that, and he sent a response to the Estes opponent.
If she could find that in there, I would appreciate.
We're getting a little off topic on the hearing for changing the agriculturalism. So rezoning and variances are still things that exist under the ordinance for properties that, you know, have special exception needs. This public hearing is specifically for changing the RA district from a two-acre minimum to a five-acre minimum.
So any comments on, on that?
I have a question about the 10-foot. So for instance, if you have five acres and you want to put a fence on it, you have to come 10 feet away from your property line to put a fence?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and that was.
That was existing.
Yes, that was existing.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
You know, like I say, because we, we came up with that because anybody had a cattle or anything, that, that would be a nice buffer. I mean, it doesn't change anything there. Like I say, the only thing that we are doing is changing from two acres to five acres in anything that is agricultural or RA.
So help me understand, Randy, the zoning, the residential agriculture, has, how long have these properties been designated residential agriculture, RA? Or how did that come in?
Well, the problem, the problem is, is the county, the county hasn't asked us about any zoning, so they've got it listed as ag. But if you read the definition of their ag is, is RA, which means it's for rural residential under their thing. But when, when we've done the comprehensive planning, is when we said RA, which is rural residential agricultural, because that's what, we thought that would be the best fit for it, you know. But I mean, you can do, you know, as long as, as long as, I mean, I think as long as anything fit under agriculture and you have the space for the animals, I mean, not overcrowding or anything like that, I mean, it's still, it's still the same. You still put a primary residence and a accessory structure on it.
But were these properties designated rural agriculture all along, or were they, I mean, way back when, when these properties were annexed into the city of Talking Rock, I guess that was under Mark Miller's, when he pulled that in? Was it designated rural residential agriculture at that time, or was it agriculture?
In September of 2018, there was a zoning ordinance amendment that basically just changed the title of that division from agriculture to residential agriculture.
2018?
In September 2018, yes. Still permitting the same agricultural uses, but changing the name to be more in line with what we've seen elsewhere.
And to answer your question, Lamar, on page 62 of this, which is the definitions, subdivision means the division of a lot, tract, parcel of land into two or more lots, plots, sites, or other division of land for the purpose, whether immediate or future, of sale or of building development for purposes other than agricultural. It includes re-subdivision, and when appropriate to the context relates to the process of subdividing or to the land or territory subdivided. So anytime you, you take it and divide it into two or more lots, it's considered under this as a subdivision.
So if you have a piece of property and you split it into two parcels, that is a subdivision?
Well, that is by definition subdividing the lot. A subdivision, as far as what you may be thinking of as a neighborhood, a subdivision, it's a different thing. But by definition, dividing any parcel into more than the one parcel that it is is subdividing the lot.
I understand subdividing is taking a piece of property and dividing it. But, I mean, when you subdivide property, there's a perception that, you know, you're either splitting a piece of property, selling a piece of it, or giving one to a child, or you're in fact creating an impact on the city where they're providing utility services or whatever. I mean, in, in the county, subdividing is, the definition is splitting the property into more than two parcels.
And like I said, now, now, like I say, we've had this since 1996. So I mean, it's not nothing that we came here at the end of the last year or in the last three years I've been there. The only thing that we added here lately is, is the updating as far as what was allowed in different areas. And we, we went by what Pickens County's and sort of City of Jasper and others had as far as usage, you know, on that piece of property, you know, whether you put a, a commercial or resident or whatever on those. But as far as the zoning chapter, it's been in there since 1996. Now, we did add the chapter on building and code enforcement because, like I say, we didn't do it at that time, and we didn't have a chapter on that. So we did add that, on that. But as far as all this other stuff, I mean, it's, it's been in there 19, like I say, 1996. So it ain't something that we, we, you know, slipped in overnight. And like I say, that was done way back then, and the city had public hearings and all like that on it. And so like I say, I mean, it's, you know, what the county has and what we have is probably different, but that's what we, we adopted back then, or they did. I mean, I wasn't here, but they did, so. And there is a, and like I say, let me, and like I say, let me see where we're. There is a section on annexation, is that what it works, or a fixed property use. And it talks about what it.
I don't have that one, Mark, sorry.
How you doing?
Good. How about you?
All right. I know it's in there because I read it one day.
Yeah, it's, we need better. I have a tab, but my tab fell off. Zoning of, are you talking about the zoning of annexed areas?
Yes, yes.
It's on page 68. It says, areas annexed to the town subsequent to the adoption of this ordinance, from which this section derives, shall be placed in the agricultural zoning district and shall remain A until such time as the comprehensive zoning plan of town has been extended to include the annexed area and a zoning change is executed in accordance with the provision of this chapter for zoning amendments. Areas may also be simultaneously annexed and zoned when executed in accordance with the prop, with the provisions of this chapter for zoning amendments.
It also says, until such time as the comprehensive zoning.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Okay. So, but like I say, the way the county reads is agriculture is, is RA.
Annexed property would come in as RA because RA is what has replaced A. It's just the new naming of that same division.
Okay, any other questions on the change from two to five?
May I ask why? What is the goal?
Well, it is because agriculture is, rural agriculture is rural. I mean, it's, it's for, you know, animals and stuff. And like I say, we feel like, because the problem is, is if you, and here's the problem is, if you clearcut a, a piece of property and you use it as agricultural, and then you come in and, and divide it in a two acre for a house, you've already clearcutted that. So, so when you do a house, house site, the, the EPD and the limestone valley considers that, you know, disturbing two acres, you know, and it doesn't fall under agriculture anymore. It's a, it's a home site. So when you do that, you have to go and do a soil erosion plan that, you know, has to go with Fort Limestone Valley. You have to pay an engineer. They, they determine if you have to have a settlement pond, and they tell you what you have to do to keep that soil from erosion and stuff. So that's the reason that, you know, that we wanted to change that.
So by doing that, keeping it in five acres, you don't have to do land disturbance permit?
Well.
Do an LDP?
Well, I mean, as long as you're doing it for agricultural, but.
Well, I mean, RA, residential agriculture.
Right.
If it's five acres, I mean, if it's two acres, well, I don't see the difference. If it's two acres, then you do an LDP, or if it's five acres, then you do an LDP.
But, but you still, I, I mean, if you're building a house on it, if you're just strictly doing it for acres also, you don't. But if you change it to build a house on it, yes, you would have to.
But it's the same where there's two acres or five acres, right?
The purpose is to preserve some larger tracts of land, to keep some of that in Talking Rock, so not everything is developed in smaller two-acre or, or smaller tracts because the other districts such as R1A has, you know, 1.5 acre minimum. You have districts with smaller minimums. You don't have any districts that have a larger minimum requirement. And generally, that would be your agricultural district.
Okay. So the goal is not for erosion control and all that, it's because you want to preserve larger tracts?
Well, no, there are multiple.
Well, but preserving larger tracts is part of.
It's all types.
Is part of preserving the soil and erosion and.
But if you're doing an LDP and erosion control measures, you're preserving it either way, whether it's two acres or five acres? Right? Am I, am I missing something?
Well, the problem, the problem, and like I say, we're, you know, we're wanting to preserve as far as, you know, larger lots. And also, we want to, you know, make sure that, about the soil and erosion. And like I say, after talking to the EPD, he recommends the same thing. So, so I mean, he doesn't, you know, like I say, I mean, he just says that's a good idea. So that's another reason we're doing, is, you know, him, him being the expert.
Are you still going to have an agriculture zoning at all, or is the?
No, it's RA.
RA is the biggest lot size?
Yes.
What was the thinking, getting wrong, getting rid of just a straight-up ag zoning with like a 10-acre like the county has? In the county's 10?
Well, I don't know about their lot size, but county, county has their ag as a residential act. I mean, if you look at the definition beside it, it says the same thing, so.
The county ag even did commercial, correct?
I'm not sure. I guess you could. I mean, if, if you have a, a public hearing, I mean, you would have to, I think they require a public hearing on any chicken houses or anything like that, I think. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure. I can't expect from them, but, but I imagine, you know. Because like I say, anytime that you. Do a commercial like that, I, I think you still have to notify the surrounding property owners, even though it's still ag, but if you're doing a commercial business.
If you do a poultry farm in Pickens County and it's currently zoned ag, all you have to have is a 550-foot buffer from the nearest residence. You do not have to have a public hearing to have a chicken house built if it's already zoned ag. County has a 10-acre agriculture and a five-acre small ag zoning. If you have a dog kennel in Pickens County, you have to be in small ag. I know this because I've sold dog kennels, you know, and I've experienced it and had to go to a rezoning hearing to make, for it to happen.
Well, then what was the, and like I say, we're still getting off, but what was the purpose of turning down those mega houses over there in the Rusum or Hill?
That was a, that was a political statement by the poultry integrator. They basically put the pressure and that, that the, they got too much feedback from the public, they wouldn't do it. That had nothing to do with the fact that the county could or should permit those chicken houses.
But now, but now, now, they did have a public hearing and everybody voiced their opinion against it.
But they, but that property, I'm not sure about the zoning on that property. I think they were actually trying to do some changes. Yeah. They were trying to change the zoning. It wasn't about because.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't sure, but, but.
So we're still in the public hearing for this one ordinance? We do have a regular meeting that we've prepped up on. So does anyone else have any more comments, questions about the ordinance amendment?
Okay, I got 14 and a half acres. If I cut that up and shell off five and five, I'm going to be hung with four and a half acres, correct? correct? That I can't do nothing with.
You'd have to get a variance or rezoning or something along those lines for a tract smaller than five acres that's currently in the RA district.
But one thing too that y'all need to consider is whenever you have a two-acre tract and you put a house on it and a driveway, you are leaving a footprint that is, you don't have grass on it, it causes more runoff, and that's all we're trying to do is preserve the quality of the land. I mean, if you've got a big farm and you've got, you've probably got it grass, you're gonna keep grass on it, which helps with the runoff, but if you've got obvious little driveways, then that water's, that water has nowhere to go, and it washes all that sediment down into our creeks and streams.
Okay.
Any other public comment before we close the public hearing?
Was the public hearing just for that?
Yeah.
Yes, specifically for that, there will be a regular meeting after.
Yeah. Okay, no other? Uh, the public hearing is closed.